Van Alstine Road and Shoemaker Road. Applicant in site development request concept approval for R2 zoning. Parkour that is zone R2 under town code 192-27. And 064.01-2-2512.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank you for your time. Due of the number of applications you have already sorted through. I'll try to make this as meaningful and brief as I can. Our first application is for Van Alstine Road. The two maps that we have, the first one was the conventional plan. We are now putting before you the cluster development which arose from neighborhood meetings, meetings with the staff and the PRC. A brief overview of the cluster plan. Some of the staff comments, one of the biggest ones, we have been asked to provide good access to the sanitary sewer as you see on the bottom of the colored rendering, as well as the retention facility which will solve our stormwater management as well as solve a regional drainage issue that you'll hear from some of our neighbors. The town wanted better access to that and then it evolved into their feeling was that they would like to own it so that they could manage, maintain, and take care of both the sanitary sewer system as well as the stormwater facility which we were happy to comply with. So, as you'll see on the map, that lower portion of the property will eventually be dedicated and needed to the town. It will give them sewer access as well as pond access and then you will eventually be owning that property. The drainage issue I mentioned, our neighbor to McEast has had a longstanding drainage problem because there just is nowhere for the water to go. We have had a number of discussions and have engineered a design that will eliminate his drainage problem with the design of our stormwater management facility. We're also going to be able to provide sewer access for three of our neighbors. You'll be hearing from Mr. Bach, his mom, she lives just a little bit east of the failing subject system and asked if there was a way to give her access to the sanitary sewer, which we were happy to do and our plan will provide access for her as well. And lastly, this design was put before our neighbors and all of our neighbors except for one, I believe, is in favor of this cluster development because it gives them more green, solves a drainage problem, and of course, we're happy to comply with that. So, those are the general overview. If you can answer any questions. With me this evening is Mr. Yanda from BME. If you have any technical questions that are above my head, he'll be happy to answer those.
We looked at this, Rudy, you know, we've had to get a look at this one bit, and I'm having a real issue with, see, cluster development has a criteria. And we've had other ones where we just couldn't do them because they didn't meet the requirements. And this, this, we're up to 25% of the total gross area of the parcel we developed, consistent land was so-and-so, 15%, but all these things can be applied. This has nothing, there's no natural features there or anything, there's no, but with being saved is open space, you know? We've got to come up with something for that in order to make it a cluster.
I'm not driven to the cluster development. We're quite happy with our first one, but between the neighbors and the town staff, you were asked to look at it. I certainly will and can make that work, but we're completely happy with the plan that meets all of the code requirements.
Yeah, I mean, we're okay with it, but if we're looking at the cluster at this right now, I can't say where do we keep some open space for it, you know what I mean? That becomes the issue. The lots are large, they're good-sized lots and everything.
350 feet deep, and when the town takes the area, it'll be well over 300.
Any suggestions, you guys?
Well, I mean, for lots to save, the question development to get smaller lots, these are huge lots.
Yeah, what's the width of that?
90 feet average.
95, whatever, yeah, that's point, I mean, that's...
That's not 100.
Why are we calling it a cluster? Let's say we're taking that the way it is, why would we call it a cluster?
Well, to give the land to the town, it would give them, the neighbors preferred that for the visuals, and it helped me with the stormwater management. But it doesn't have to be clustered, I'm not sold on it. I'm happy with this one too, so I'll take direction from staff and engineering. Martin, I don't know if you have a comment?
I'm just, I cannot be any associate. So, on the cluster plan, the lots are 90 feet, we cannot go 100 feet wide, so we would not conform to R2 zoning, so. But would that be an option to provide like conservation easement and leave that, you know, plant in that area?
I mean, that's a nice, it's a nice plan, it's a real nice plan, but technically it was under R2, we could do that, then he's got a variance. That's what I'm trying to get at, how can we avoid the word cluster?
It's still the same old block, you have to gain the lot.
No!
But it takes you to certain things, and some of the things that are important in this is one sewer access because the bike was going through the backyard.
Yeah, that's what we want, but...
This plan, we think, this plan provides an accessory for the maintenance vehicle for hallway to the pond as well as the sewer mission. They were concerned that they couldn't get heavy equipment to the back there, and it also creates just larger and useful backyards.
No question, you're right. But how should we, but how can we do it by not calling it a cluster? My thinking is, another applicant comes in, says he gave him a cluster development, he gave him a cluster development and I want the same thing. How can we do this project without calling that a cluster development? That's my point.
A rezoning, going for a variance, we love this.
Well, I don't know if you want to mess with all that, but...
I'd, I'd just, uh, cluster the...
Yeah, it's just the terminology, because if you say it's a cluster development, you go into code, that doesn't meet the requirements because there's no open space, you're not leaving anything.
Well, the space between sewer and the house to the south is town park.
What much weight does it...
Him providing gravel driveway so that the sewer mass, they need to maintain the sewer, can get back there any time of year.
But come up with something, we can call it, that's fine.
It's a little over 27,000 square feet.
How many?
27,000 square feet for the parcels.
Where the path is instead?
An extra road is never a good idea, you want to get some place somewhere.
Yeah, and that's accessible because the roadway goes right into it.
No, I'm asking an intersection.
Yeah.
We can, we've given the minimum that staff asked for for the town to own, we, there's still 300 and some feet which is more than an average lot needs. If it helps, we can take that line and slide it up and leave double that space of just open space that never could be built.
I don't want to, man, you're trying to get rid of these kinds of issues here, and that is for us to maintain.
I would, yeah, I would do that, that's one thing, but the other thing is, you can put a line across there and say your yard ends here, invariably, what's going to happen? They're going to go out there anyway, so I wouldn't even mess with it.
Okay, that would give more open space if that helps.
Well, okay, look, if you guys are looking at the drawing, how many square feet, what do you have there for open?
For the, the open space area is 27,200 square feet.
Okay, all right, then we use that, all right? Just so we've got something to say it's at least preserved land.
You're going to scare us or something, yes.
Then we're...
Kind of looking back to the habits, you know, of what's in front of town, like a wire line. What's, what's...
Not any much, not any new roads, there's always some technical blocks.
To avoid that flooding of the parcels.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, he's got the other one too. He's got the conventional layout, which is what's required, of course, of that. All right, it's a pretty, pretty simple setup, I mean, the road is, the road is there, because there's lots on the road. Anything, can you bring it?
Obviously, I'll handle about 55-foot rear setbacks. If someone wants to put a deck out back or whatever, what, how hard is that going to be from the property, with a setback for a deck or whatever?
Um, rear setback in this zoning is 55 feet.
So, if anyone wanted to get a deck, they would have to come in for a variance?
Unfortunately.
Well, the lots are 300 feet deep, they're...
No, no, you're looking at those, no, they're 200 foot away. They're deep lots.
Those are deep lots.
Yeah, they're 200 foot long deck.
Could be an unlimited sewer pool in there if they wanted it.
Yeah, no, that's fine, okay. Anything, anybody else, just for sketch point, anything else?
No.
All right, go for a, we'll call it a cluster.
Very good.
Okay? Oh! Okay, it's not a public hearing, but absolutely sure, you want to speak, go ahead, we'll look at it.
Yeah.
Just give your name and address.
Thank you. Good evening, thank you for hearing me. My name is Laura Flick and I live across the street at 804 Shoemaker Road. I believe the reason that he wants to do this is because he does not want to go to the zoning board and ask for five variances of 10 feet on those five houses that are facing my home across the road. He wants to put them in at 90 feet frontage where only 75 feet frontage is required for the cluster development, which makes all these driveways right across the street, and also in the cluster development, in his proposal, he mentioned they will have a setback of only 60 feet. My home across the road has a setback of 110 feet. It's a long way out from my front door to my mailbox to get the mail in the winter. They're going to be right on top of the road, just so that you know. When he proposed this to his, to the neighbors, he said they can put the houses anywhere they want, they can pay for however far back they need them or however they want them customized, because we did discuss where the driveway would be. I said, if there's going to be a driveway and a garage, can you do some of those side loads so when the garage doors come up in the morning, the lights don't shine directly across the street? Anybody can have any house the way they want it, because they're buying the lots and they're building the houses. From what I understand here, it looks like he's building five houses in a row that's, that's less than the R2 required zoning of 100 feet frontage so that he can build more houses quickly. If he were to only build four houses directly across, there would be no issue. Just thought I would make myself heard, thank you very much for your time.
Well, thank you.
804 Shoemaker is Laura Flick, thank you.
Hi, we're on here, I live at 801 Shoemaker Road, and I own three parcels on that side of the road, across, on the north side of Shoemaker. I just want to say, if we're going to have six houses there, I would much prefer this plan over his other one, because it does leave that open in the back where people can plant trees and, you know, at least it leaves a little spot, place for nature, birds and whatnot to get in there, so I, I'm all for his new proposal.
What we're looking at on that as far as that piece in the back, and that's why we're considering this as a cluster development, is because the land in the back, that's where the detention time and everything would be, and all that parcel around it, so that would be basically an open space piece of land back there going in.
That's what I like.
Yeah, well, it does preserve some land, really, that's what it's all about.
Good evening, my name is John Bach, essentially representing my mother's interest, Albach, who lives at 807 Shoemaker Road, she can't be here tonight, but we have talked to Rudy about this plan here and prefers the one he's proposing over the ones with the houses in the back, mostly because it would involve a driveway going right along or a lot line. But I guess the question I have in this cluster, I don't call it rezoning, but reclassifying this cluster, kind of opens up the door to much narrower setbacks from what, you know, the R2 zoning would be, it's, I think, 15 feet minimum. From what I saw on the website, unless I read it wrong, it says you can, on a cluster, you can actually get a five-foot setback, which I don't think he plans to do that, but I just wanted to clarify what the setback would be, I'm talking the side setback, I know, I know he's meeting the front and the rear.
Wait a minute, you can't have five feet, you can have a total of 15 feet.
Between, yeah, I saw that.
10 feet on one side and 5 feet on the other.
Okay.
So, technically, I guess that holds...
I don't know if he was...
What he could do, you asked about, what he could do is move this house 10 feet from the line and this house 5, so there's, you've got 15, you've got the space in between them, and then you could take that 90-foot lot and do what you're suggesting, maybe across the street from you, Rudy can consider putting an end load garage?
I could, it'd be hard for me to speak for a buyer and tell them, oh, you can have this lot, but I'm telling you how, so I would, that's going to entertain it, absolutely, absolutely.
So, that may be something that, it's a possibility, I suppose, that, I'm sorry.
We just like, you know, I know he's talking a 90-foot width lot, but hopefully maintain the 15-foot, you know, which is a cluster district doesn't allow as much narrower, closer to the lot, I guess, than the R2 does.
Well, I guess, the thoughts were that the concept as it's shown, and if we're to stay unchanged...
Yeah, shows 15, I believe, right?
Shows 15, yeah.
And you're right? Yeah, that's the goal, but he has the option to go within the, the constraints of that cluster.
What I'm saying though is that this is on, this is being brought under, here's the concept point on, and when it gets approved, here's the 15-foot setback, that's what raised this.
Okay, so essentially, that's what he's up to then, right?
Right.
Okay, that's my concern. So, other than that, you know, I understand he has the other option without a variance, we definitely prefer this one with the houses front and Shoemaker instead of behind each other. That's it, thank you.
I'm not a neighbor, but I asked a question, and I'm down the street, I'm 821 Shoemaker Road.
Who's the wife that used to do that?
I live at 821 Shoemaker Road, my name's Susan Colette's crew. I haven't been involved in most of the conversations because I'm too far down, but I know you're putting a pond in, but how are you going to guarantee all that displaced water, because it is a lot of clay soil? And I know when they built the subdivision behind where I live, they have their, their pond, but still, it has affected our, luckily, we have a very long lot, but we get a pond in our backyard in the right places as opposed to when there wasn't a subdivision back there. So, there will be displaced water, so how will this pond keep, like the people that live behind it not causing them to have the water problem that is the clay soil? So, has that been discussed, and just to make sure?
Actually, the detention bond's, well, under the engineering, but the idea of that is to collect the water from the site, contain it, and then release it slowly, so if there's a water situation there now, the detention pond corrects any drainage issues off of that project, because when you're putting roofs and driveways and so on, it's impervious surface, it collects more water, correct?
Right.
So, it's all directed into the ponds, so then the pond holds it, comes in on a pipe this big and it goes out in a pipe that big, which obviously means it goes out slower, so when it goes out slower, it's less impact downstream where it's flowing. So, these ponds are intended to correct the drainage problems in the area.
Now, does that lead out to the sewer or what, where does that?
Not the sewer, no, that would go, that would, that goes, they would go ultimately, you know, create whatever, the stream...
Stormwater system should have a receiving water pond in the back.
That's excellent, because it is a very wet land, he said that previously when it was orchards, it was like swampy, wet.
That's the idea of the pond, to collect that water, and generally, if there's adjoining properties, it's controlled onto this site, not running onto somebody else's property too.
So, it might help them too.
Absolutely.
Okay, and this is only concept, they have to do with all the engineering and everybody else's, so it's just the beginning, this is just to see if the board likes the alternative concepts.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, I'm Lloyd Bach, I live at 593 Notre Dame Drive, my property is actually on the southeast portion of the line, I'm actually that guy with the property that has the water problem, and I think for my interests, the best plan would be a further one here where the retention pond be put back in the, the southeast corner, and hopefully with the agreement that I have with Rudy, my water will drain into that pond as clear of my problem.
That's correct. Sure, thanks. All right, Rudy?
Well, that's all I have on it, if the board's ready, I can...
I think that, in my opinion, how about you guys, you have this here one here, right?
Yeah.
Okay, there it is, there's benefits to it all the way around, so, all right.
Would you like me to go ahead into the next application?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, he go ahead and get set up.
687 Hard Road Property, applicant in the site development, request concept approval for cluster development and whole company, that is zone R2.
So, this is 687 Hard Road, we own a number of pieces in our building company, I'm extremely excited about this one, I know there's a number of properties, I said this is the last one I'm going to develop, but absolutely fell in love with this when I found it. Quick overview, it's a beautiful piece of woods on Hard Road, the corner of it touches the HoJack Trail, details of the project very briefly, a conventional plan in front of you, which meets all criteria, and then we have the benefit again being at PRC and getting some excellent input from staff. The cluster plan that you see in color shows the same number, nine lots, we're not asking for any more lots, but we believe some of the benefits are briefly as follows. We'll be able to develop this, first of all, as a private drive, which will narrow the road, it's going to allow us to keep it beautiful, and the woods there, it's not the scruffy woods, it's really a lovely wood, so we'll be able to maintain a wooded buffer all the way around that property for the benefit of our buyers as well as the neighbors. We'll be able to rebuild, there's a little tributary there, it's been there a long time, there's some old pipes, some crushed piping, so engineering and BME have talked about upgrading that tributary to meet current standards, and we'll also be able to, again, build a private drive of the town maintenance, it will be handled through an HOA, and the neighbors will maintain their road, their entrance, signage, and lighting. So, I can expand more, but I know you've been here a long time, so I can answer any questions you may have, and again, technical, Mr. Yanda's here for that.
Okay, this is, I know, that's PRC, I know. The, that strip that's in the middle of lots five and six?
Correct. Let me explain that a little bit. I have spoken with my neighbors to the south of me, one, the older lady that lives there, she lost her husband, they're going to sell but doesn't know when, the other folks, the second house, they've been there a long time, the house is quite in need of repair, they also are thinking of selling it. I do not own it at this point, however, if in some future time I do or somebody else owns it, we've left a strip between those two houses so that in the event that either I own or someone else does, it's a private drive, it's an HOA, a provision could be made for a pri, another driveway, and two or three, or even one house could be there, so it's a future planning that may never be used, but we thought with good design, we would, we would at least plan for it. Thank you, Tony, for asking that, I forgot that I had that on my list.
Okay, but in the future, let's say you do end up with that, would it be considered, I mean, I don't know how many houses would fit out of, of what that piece is.
You could probably put somewhere between two and four depending on...
They look like, I'm guessing, about almost 200-foot wide, those lots, I'm guessing?
Uh, they're 100 each, so you have about 220 by 500 feet if you kept the houses on the road.
So, we don't have to deal with it now, but if just, if that comes through, maybe that drive coming down connects back over to Hard Road, it's a private drive, that's a lot of traffic, not a private drive.
It is, I did, I'm not totally familiar with that provision, although I've done a number of them, so we did check with the attorney general, there is no minimum requirement for a private drive, it could be eight, could be 18, could be 28, they just make different language based on the provision. And what we would do when we draft this HOA, which as you all know is a ridiculous amount of work, we would not provide it for now, but we would make the provision that in the event that all the members voted, let's say I bought it, it would be a provision that could be used in the future, but I don't want to muddy the waters too much, because I don't know if I'll ever own it, but we thought good design dictated a legitimate provision.
Right now, we're dealing with this.
Yeah.
One thing I noticed, it's, it's being proposed on our cluster development, and the way the cluster development works is you first look at the traditional layout and then you try to put the same number of units, smaller footprint, but the caveat of that is it does have open spaces, it's based on actually billable areas, and this traditional layout, if you take a look at the dimensions on it, it'll leave me a strip that's 15 feet wide to put a house, so a traditional layout, I would say, is not something that's actually buildable in any sense. It has nine lots or eight lots along the road that are 127 feet wide, and out of that you have a 20-foot common driveways that are actually down to 117 feet, and then you take off 50 foot on the front setback and 40 feet on the other, so you wind up with a 15-foot wide buildable area for a house. There is no way you could ever build a house that narrow.
I'm a...
The concept, I mean, this, to get nine, I mean, cluster development, if you're using this as an argument for the name, I would say that this is not representative of what's actually buildable for this lot under existing zoning.
So, on the conventional plan, you see lots 175 feet wide, right, which is over 100 foot width required, and the building of areas actually 27 feet deep, which you can put a house in this built area.
127 feet deep minus 50-foot setback, minus 50-foot setback, 27 feet minus the width of the common driveway, which is 10 feet, you're down to a width that's not buildable for a person. I mean, you can see it on here, you look, just look at how narrow that building is, it's not reasonable to put...
The lot comes from the...
It's going to be a development of tiny houses?
The lot comes from the center line right of the road and the setback from that is 50 feet.
Sure, but still, when you do the math on it, it's something very narrow to fit a house on, and it's not...
The zoning, it's not a reasonable width to put any kind of...
Zoning requires minimum house 1,800 square feet, right, so 27 by 65 is 1,800 square feet.
Yeah, but you, the strip that you're allowing to the houses, they're like...
We are providing 50 feet from center line to the private drive, and we also provide 50-foot rear setback, with 127-foot wide lot, there's 27 feet. Uh, with a hundred twenty-seven foot wide lot, there's twenty-seven feet left for buildable area and a hundred seventy-five feet wide, minus the side setbacks.
Same question, you're not going to be that in that of this one?
I think we just wanted to show that it's buildable by the code and that, you know.
Well, it's, it's a, then what you would consider is something acceptable to this parcel, but this traditional layout wouldn't be acceptable.
Well, the cluster zoning allows for smaller minimums.
No, 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 I understand that. But the cluster development, the way you get the number of parcels on it is you take a look at the existing thing and say how many house parcels would fit under the traditional zoning. And I think for a development this size with these number of lots, that this is not something that you can consider even as an acceptable development for the traditional design. I think what I'm saying is if your nine houses is overstated, it should be some number of less.
Yeah, I, I think, right, so then I can predict the market, uh, but ranches, what we're building in Edmonton is ranches.
So you're looking, you're referring to standard, standard. Really, a standard plan proposes a very wide, it's a rectangular lot, but it's wider than it is deep.
Yeah.
And with the private drive down the middle, it's severely restricted, the house that you own.
Well, the private drive is much restricted, isn't it, right?
Yeah, but would be.
You don't have to do a sixty-foot, I'd rate it, a private drive.
Well, it's twenty foot.
Well, with utilities, you're probably look, well, yes. With utilities, look, if you need it, off the.
You would have to subdivide this.
Yeah.
And there would be parcels that rely on an access, you can agree with.
With HOA, we will, we will, we'll maintain.
There'll be access and utility spent to both the lots and it will be maintained by the HOA.
You know, effectively, they are isolated lots.
Right.
If the agreement didn't work.
I don't understand the question.
Well, I just like it as I, I think it's, I don't think it's a reasonable thing that we're just doing, because if this is reasonable, everything in town will do it this way. Okay, and private driveways are absolutely everything you might have in the roads. Where there's ten, nine houses, I don't, I don't call it, yeah. I don't think that this traditional layout is something that's reasonably acceptable for that particular parcel.
I, I will definitely defer to the board and engineers and staff, if the statutes hold out that the definition of a traditional plan is mandated by some required buildable size, then I would say they absolutely will, uh, make an adjustment. But if the plan is, that a conventional plan does not have restrictions on house depths, then it's a matter of interpretation and personal opinion, but I would certainly not state the law on that, I would let the experts do it. But as far as I'm aware, uh, that statute is not in there or a personal opinion on liking or not liking the depth of a property does not determine the density. But I, I'm certainly open to discussing that.
Well, you know, I, I see what you're saying, you're right. What is that actual spacing there, like a lot's a hundred and twenty-eight foot, you got fifty foot off, fifty foot in the back, that's a hundred foot. So that only leaves twenty-eight feet, that buildable area in there. Twenty-eight feet, you could build a house, but now we kind of, probably, and this is what we've done with the, uh, townhouse, with some, where we've had situations like that where it jammed. And then you say, well, you know, they're going to be looking for patios and they get a variance. Well, you could do it, but you're not going to get the variances. Variances would not be allowed on a particular site, so it's the only way you can control this. Twenty-eight foot is narrow for a house, absolutely.
And even going back to buildable lots where you have a, there's this extreme that's running through and it's a lot nine and lot two. Your streams run underneath your house unless you redirect the streams down, so it would, it would say that those two lots would be built.
What you're trading off is a shallow wide lot or a narrow room back there.
Right, right.
I mean, you're still just getting the same number of houses.
No, I'm still going back to say you have to, on a cluster development, you have to subtract out the areas that's not built. And the areas that's not built, the board thinks it's right on top of the stream. So it's not a nine lot, it's a pretty long, it's something.
I think maybe with this particular, maybe you should really look at this and see what you can do with that, because I have to agree, you're, you're correct. This would be the conventional, but some of the, you, you don't have twenty-seven feet to put a house. I mean, there's garages that are deeper than that. So that is, that is a tight space.
If you got the lot one, lot nine, you have, that's thirty-seven feet. All these other lots, actually two, four and six to eight are twenty-seven feet, buildable area. And the back lot is, the five is actually oversized, right, there again.
You wouldn't put a house on top of the stream.
Over here on lot two.
Lot's nine and two. Lot nine and two.
Yeah, there, there's enough space to put house in other location, we can maintain thirty foot wide or thirty foot wide, you know, this would setback from that, the street. Also, there are no wetlands, we walk the side, so it's just that creek there.
Well, still it's only twenty-seven foot, but you, I think you need to do it, I, I, an agreement with Derek and this. Take a look at it, it's going to come up with something different than that.
So what, what.
You're not going to build a house twenty-seven foot wide, let's face it, you're probably going to run a nice thing and build the answer.
We can make house eighty foot wide, it's, it's the depth.
Yeah, no, you're not, but twenty-seven foot is narrow. There's garages that are deeper than twenty-seven feet.
So what, what is, what the code is actually requiring, what has to be that, that.
No, you meet the code, okay, you don't want to do it, you want to play this, we'll play it. Now you get, you want to play the game, here's what the deal is, we'll make it, we'll prove it the way you got it. And we'll put a restriction in there that nobody can put anything outside of that twenty-seven foot. No variances for, for, for docks or anything else.
I don't mean to interrupt, but we, no, we, we don't, we don't want to do that.
No, I know you don't, that's why I'm trying to say this.
I understand what you're saying, I would ask respectfully, so that I understand, even going in, we've got a number more coming up. If I could get an interpretation of the code, uh, we're not talking lawyers, I just need to understand it. If the code allows the board an opinion on whether they like or dislike the depth of a property, I understand that and I'll know going forward. If the code is the code, then, then we need to have a discussion. And let's say we get past that, what does the board like? Would you like to see another draft proposal and talk about it? What do you think's the next approach?
I, I think.
I'm not spending more money for nothing.
As far as, as far as, yes, I, I think, I think Rudy, I think you meet the code, I don't think there's an issue with meeting the code. However, you don't remember the last time you built a house twenty-seven foot wide, really, you know that.
Correct.
Okay?
I got it?
We'll, we'll.
Come up with it, I was watching, get your opinion.